...for Monday, April 12th to order. The city clerk, please call roll and make general announcement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will be happy to call roll for the April 12th, 2010 regular meeting. However, I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearings or during the call for public comment, you're required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that speaker cards were received by the city clerk's staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. When you hear the bell, you have 30 seconds to complete your remarks. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association provided however that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood?
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman?
Here.
Councilmember Julie Zoner Bailey?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk is absent and excused.
Yeah, Mayor, he sent me a statement that he just wanted me to mention at this point. It says he's been subpoenaed to appear in U.S. District Court in Macon all day today and tomorrow. He regrets he will but not be able to attend the city council meeting tonight since the court has provided him accommodations to stay in Macon and he asked that I would read that.
And Councilmember Bert Hewitt is also excused. Councilmember Joe Longoria?
Here.
And Councilmember Alan Tartt is excused and out of town at a mandatory business meeting but wishes the council well tonight. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Well, I want to welcome everyone here tonight, but I also want to make a special welcome to our Milton varsity boys' basketball team who are also our state champions. So, we're glad to have you guys here and just a few minutes, we've got to take care of a little bit of business, but just a few minutes, we, the council wants to present you a proclamation, so I just want to congratulate you guys and we're glad you're here. Thanks for coming. So, will the city clerk please sound the first item?
First item is Agenda Item Number 10-1083, Approval of Meeting Agenda.
Okay, is there any items to be reconsidered? Okay, have a motion and a second?
Mayor, I'll put forward a motion to approve the meeting agenda this evening, Agenda Item Number 10-1083.
I'll second it.
Have a motion by Councilmember Bailey, seconded by, I believe, Councilmember Longoria. Call in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, next item is Public Comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and the city council to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes for remarks. City clerk, can we have a public comment tonight?
Yes, sir, we have Mr. Buck Bell.
Good evening. My name's Buck Bell, 13225 Bethany Road, Milton, Georgia 30009. I'm here tonight talking about our new lawnmower business in Crab Apple. We're all excited about business in Crab Apple, but we're not excited about this type of a presentation being put on by the lawnmower business. Some of you have probably driven by and seen it. Back in the election, the time of election at a private party, Mr. Harris came up to me and told me he was getting ready to open up a small engine repair business and very quickly told me how beautiful it was going to be and how he was going to fix up the building because it had been so neglected from the ambulance company for years. And I said, "Good for him, we always need more business in Crab Apple." On February the 25th, after about two or three weeks of them being opened and starting to notice that equipment was being displayed out front, work was being done in the front parking lot, there was no signage, piles of dirt everywhere. I'd met with Mr. Harris privately and asked him if we could do something to work this out together. After a meeting, he basically told me, "Take it up with the city," which I did shortly thereafter, even that day, the next day. And since that end of February, all the way through today, it has grown now to be a place where you can find at least 100 pieces of equipment piled in the front yard. Down the side of the building, there's a graveyard of equipment out in the back now. He has built a fence in the right-of-way, he has a little temporary sign stuck out there. It just goes on and on and on. It is not what we had envisioned for Crab Apple. I don't think it's what the city of Milton has envisioned. We now notice that the carpet people are starting to stack remnants out in front of their buildings. Gosh, you know, I run a business there, two businesses there, I own three businesses, three suites with businesses. I'm just thinking, we ought to take everything, put it out on the street, get the girls to start knitting out in the front yard and everything else. I guess this is like not Milton and the city, this is not going to be Milton and the flea market. I know that the city is working on it. I'm being a little smart and flippant, I apologize for that, but to me, it has been a long and arduous 45 days watching this thing get and grow out of control, up to the point that last Friday, in fact, put up a metal building, poured a cement slab without a permit. It didn't follow what they promised the DRB, it didn't follow what they promised staff. The whole development does not follow what he was rezoned for, and I believe this was back in 2006 with Fulton County when he came. In fact, he used my architect to put conceptual drawings of how the building that's being used for the lawnmower shop used to be for the Milton ambulance shop was to be renovated to look historical. The building that now houses the ambulance company was to be demolished. There was supposed to be no driveway in front of the old house that caused a traffic issue. There's all type of notes in here that he would abide to historical conditioning, that he, you know, follow this, this is site-specific, it's zoning-specific. The thing that troubles me with all of this, I guess, is that I guess anybody can go out and take a pro, take a plan, make a promise, get awarded density, and then just do what they want with their property. I mean, to me, it seems that when, when I in the past in Crab Apple and other places have made a promise to perform as promised and given drawings as specific evidence of being able to do something, I have done it. I'm not a special person, I just know what it takes to get a job done. You know, I abide by the right-of-way setbacks, I abide by the overlays, I abide by city ordinance. Life code, you know, the fire department has been to see my building eight times in the last 12 months. I think they don't know they've been there before, but every time they come in, they open up our electrical closets, they check all the emergency devices, they look at our stepways. You know, our building was built well within exceed of code, health, building, life, everything back in 2004 to 2006. So, it kind of surprises me that here, this building here, I am sure, is so far out of life code, so far out of other code, you know, historical code for certain. You know, they boxed in two open garages with plywood doors with gate hinges on them. They're not even painted, they leave the doors wide open during the day and work on the lawnmowers somewhere between inside those garages and outside on the driveway. It just has to stop, it has to go away. You're setting a terrible precedent by allowing it to go on, and I know there's going to be some discussion after this meeting of what's being done to it. But I would hope that the city would take this opportunity to set an authoritative precedent and to do some enforcement. So, we all started abiding by these rules and regulations that a lot of us worked hours and hours to write, that a lot of staff spent hours and hours revising and conforming to and explaining to and doing. You know, to me, it seems that if we're all going to live in harmony in a city, that we ultimately have to live by the rules. If you can't live by the rules, then you shouldn't be able to do as you please. I have been told by this applicant, not necessarily Mr. Harris, but his partner, that they will do as they please until someone stops them. So, I'm here tonight just to say that's the history as I remember it and know it and look forward to the comments and what happens over this period to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. And I do know our city staff is looking at this and give it a rundown later on in the meeting. Can we have any other public comment?
That's all, sir.
Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please sound the items?
First item is Approval of the March 1st, 2010 Regular Meeting Minutes, Agenda Item Number 10-1084. Next item is Approval of the March 8th, 2010 Special Called Meeting Minutes, Agenda Item Number 10-1085. Third item is Approval of the March 8th, 2010 Work Session Minutes, Agenda Item Number 10-1086. Fourth item is Approval of a Contract Between JJE Contractors, Inc. for Emergency Repairs to the Providence Road Bridge over Copper Sandy Creek, Agenda Item Number 10-1087. Next item is Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement Bine Among the Cities of Alpharetta, Johns Creek, Milton, Roswell, and Sandy Springs for Participation in the U.S. Geological Survey Assistance Award Program, Agenda Item Number 10-1088. Our next item is Approval of an Agreement Between the City of Milton and Avanet Web Solutions, LLC, also known as GovOffice.com, for the Design and Maintenance of New City Website, Agenda Item Number 10-1089. Our seventh item is Approval of a Services Agreement Between the City of Milton and Cook Construction Services, Inc., for the Removal of an Existing Dump Site at Birmingham Park, Agenda Item Number 10-1090. Eighth item is Approval of a Software License Agreement Between Guardian Tracking and the City of Milton, Agenda Item Number 10-1091. Next item is Approval of a Contract Between the City of Milton and PropertyRoom.com for the Disposition of Evidence and Property, Agenda Item Number 10-1092. And our 10th and final agenda item is Approval of an Agreement Between the City of Milton and Georgia Technology Authority to Obtain Motor Vehicle Reports for Non-Public Safety Employees, Agenda Item Number 10-1093.
Okay, we'll have a motion and a second? Mayor, I move that we accept the consent agenda items listed by the city clerk.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Longoria and a second by Councilmember Thurman.
I'm the new guy.
I'm the new guy. Do that. So, call in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And I'm going to move on to reports and presentations. Will the city clerk please sound the first item?
First item is a Georgia Cities Week Proclamation presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Whereas, city government is the closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents, and whereas, city government is administered for and by its citizens as dependent upon public commitment to and understanding of its many responsibilities, and whereas, city government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public services and their benefit, and whereas, Georgia Cities Week is very important time to recognize the important role played by city government in our lives, and whereas, this week offers an important opportunity to spread the word to all citizens of Georgia that they can shape and influence the branch of government which is closest to the people, and whereas, the Georgia Municipal Association and its member cities have joined together to teach students and, to teach students and other citizens about municipal government through a variety of different projects and information, and whereas, Georgia Cities Week offers an important opportunity to convey to all the citizens of Georgia that they can shape and influence the government through their civic involvement. Now therefore, we, the mayor and council hereby recognize and proclaim April 18th through 24th, 2010, as Georgia Cities Week in the City of Milton and encourage all citizens, city government officials, and employees to recognize this week and celebrate it accordingly. Given under my hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia on the 12th day of April 2010.
Okay, well, city clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is a Proclamation Recognizing Milton High School, 2010, Georgia Quadruple A Boys Basketball Championships presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Well, there's only four, you left out a day.
Five, five.
You didn't know that. That's not short.
Well, as I said before, we've got a proclamation here tonight for you guys. I'm going to read this proclamation, but I want you to understand that after you guys had had one championship, I talked to the athletic director and talked about wanting to do something for you guys and recognize you, and also, in the meantime after that, we also had some council members that were interested and wanted to do that also. So, I'm going to, this is coming, I'm going to read this proclamation, but I want everybody to know that the entire council, even those that aren't here, are sponsored to you. So, everybody's supporting you guys. And once I read this proclamation, I'm going to ask you to come up forward and the council to come down, and I'm going to present you with the proclamation that you could each take home and frame and hang up, and also we can get some pictures.
Whereas, basketball, the truly American game invented in Springfield, Massachusetts in 1892, is a sport that requires skillful hand-eye coordination, mental awareness, agility, grace, and teamwork, and whereas, the Milton High School Boys Basketball Team has a tradition of excellence and accomplishment in athletic and academic competition reflecting the highest ideals of hard work, training, and sportsmanship, and whereas, the Milton High School Boys Basketball Program has been active in the school for decades without a state championship, and whereas, the 2008-2009 High School Boys Basketball Program Team competed in the state championship game and returned in 2010 to win both the region and the state championships. And whereas, the 2009-2010 Varsity Boys Basketball Team was ranked in multiple nationwide polls as a top 20 team in the USA and as a, as high as fourth in the nation, and whereas, the 2009-2010 Varsity Boys Basketball Team has had three players named to the Associated Press All-State First and Second Teams and four players garner spots or honorable mentions on the, I will say, 5A All-State and All-North Fulton First and Second Teams, and whereas, members of the team were named the Milton Neighbor, North Fulton Player of the Year in Atlanta Journal and Constitution of North Fulton Player of the Year and to that paper's first-team All-State, and whereas, the 2009-2010 Varsity Boys Basketball Squad was the first from Georgia to be named a top 10 state championship team, and whereas, the players on the Milton High School Boys Basketball Team are champions not only on the court but in the classroom and in the community and in the life, and we are proud this great team is located in Milton, Georgia. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Milton hereby dedicate Monday, April 12th, 2010, as Milton High School Boys Basketball Day in the city of Milton. It's given under my hand and the seal of the city of Milton on this 12th day of April.
I'd like to now ask the council to step forward and the basketball team to come up to the podium.
a podium.
Thank you. All the council just taking a minute. Okay, let's move on to our first presentation. The city clerk please send the item.
First. First presentation, approval of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia to amend the city's purchasing policies to allow for the option of procuring professional services without competitive bidding and for other purposes. This is discussed at March eighth council work session, agenda item number ten, ten ninety-four. Our next item is presentation of an ordinance to amend chapter forty-eight, article four, traffic calming and control of the city of Milton's code of ordinances. Agenda item number ten, ten ninety-five. Next item is U zero nine dash zero three dash twenty-eight eighty, Mountain Road by T-Mobile South LLC to obtain a use permit on AG one agricultural zoned property for a hundred and forty-five foot tall monopole cell tower with an additional four foot lightning rod for a total of a hundred and forty-nine feet, article nineteen point four point seven. Agenda item number ten, ten ninety-six. Our next item is UN zero four, one four four nine five Hope Well Road by T-Mobile South LLC to obtain a use permit on AG one agricultural zoned property for a hundred and fifty-foot tall monopole cell tower with an additional four foot lightning rod for a total of a hundred and fifty-four feet, article nineteen point four point seven. This is agenda item number ten, ten ninety-seven. Our final item is U zero nine dash zero five, one three three zero two New Providence Road by T-Mobile South LLC to obtain a use permit on AG one agricultural zoned property for a hundred and fifty-foot tall monopole cell tower with an additional four foot lightning rod for a total of a hundred and fifty-four feet, article nineteen point four point seven. This is agenda item number ten, ten ninety-eight.
Okay, do I have a motion and a second?
I'll put forward a motion to approve our first presentation including items one through five as stated by our city clerk.
Second. A motion by council member Bailey and a second by council member Longoria. If there are any in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If there are none, that's unanimous. Then we'll move on to public hearings. The city clerk, please sound the next item.
This is for approval of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to I Love New York Pizza and Attila's Grill located at nine eighty Birmingham Road, Suite two hundred, Milton, Georgia, three zero 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 four. The applicant is Anar Gafarzada for consumption on premises, wine and malt beverage. Agenda item number ten, ten ninety-nine presented by Stacy Inglis, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is simply a transfer of ownership. This business has previously held a wine and malt beverage license. The previous owners have sold this business to the new owner, Mr. Gafarzanda, and they have met all the requirements of the city ordinance. Staff recommends approval of the license.
Okay, is there any public comment outside? We're going to open the hearing. There's no public comment. Okay, any questions for the Inglis on this?
I have just one question. I know, thank you, Mayor. I know historically when we had first heard this case, there were two separate businesses, et cetera. Obviously, it's, I believe, ownership's being transferred for both collectively. Can you just speak to whether or not these two businesses are owned singularly by the same person?
They are owned singularly by the same person.
And similarly, is there ever a need to have two separate licenses based on the two businesses? It's always a function of the individual person, correct?
They share the same kitchen. We've gone through this and because they share the same kitchen, they are considered really one business even though there are separate interests. You can get to the other business within the same.
So those configurations from a few years ago still apply? Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions? Any other council discussion? If there's none, I'm going to close the hearing and ask for a motion and a second.
I'll put forward a motion to approve agenda item number ten dash ten ninety-nine.
I'll second it.
A motion by council member Bailey, a second by council member Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? If there are none, that's unanimous. Then we'll move on to public hearings. The city clerk, please sound the next item.
First presentation, approval of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia to amend the city's purchasing policies to allow for the option of procuring professional services without competitive bidding and for other purposes. This is discussed at March eighth council work session, agenda item number ten, ten ninety-four. Our next item is presentation of an ordinance to amend chapter forty-eight, article four, traffic calming and control of the city of Milton's Code of Ordinances. Agenda item number ten, ten ninety-five. Next item is U zero nine dash zero three dash twenty-eight eighty, Mountain Road by T-Mobile South LLC to obtain a use permit on AG one agricultural zoned property for a hundred and forty-five foot tall monopole cell tower with an additional four foot lightning rod for a total of a hundred and forty-nine feet, article nineteen point four point seven. Agenda item number ten, ten ninety-six. Our next item is UN zero four, one four four nine five Hope Well Road by T-Mobile South LLC to obtain a use permit on AG one agricultural zoned property for a hundred and fifty-foot tall monopole cell tower with an additional four foot lightning rod for a total of a hundred and fifty-four feet, article nineteen point four point seven. Agenda item number ten, ten ninety-eight.
Okay, do I have a motion and a second?
I'll put forward a motion to approve our first presentation including items one through five as stated by our city clerk.
Second. A motion by council member Bailey and a second by council member Longoria. If there are any in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If there are none, that's unanimous. Then we'll move on to public hearings. The city clerk, please sound the next item.
This is for approval of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to I Love New York Pizza and Attila's Grill located at nine eighty Birmingham Road, Suite two hundred, Milton, Georgia, three zero 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 four. The applicant is Anar Gafarzada for consumption on premises, wine and malt beverage. Agenda item number ten, ten ninety-nine presented by Stacy Inglis, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is simply a transfer of ownership. This business has previously held a wine and malt beverage license. The previous owners have sold this business to the new owner, Mr. Gafarzanda, and they have met all the requirements of the city ordinance. Staff recommends approval of the license.
Okay, is there any public comment outside? We're going to open the hearing. There's no public comment. Okay, any questions for the Inglis on this?
I have just one question. I know, thank you, Mayor. I know historically when we had first heard this case, there were two separate businesses, et cetera. Obviously, it's, I believe, ownership's being transferred for both collectively. Can you just speak to whether or not these two businesses are owned singularly by the same person?
They are owned singularly by the same person.
And then similarly, is there ever a need to have two separate licenses based on the two businesses? It's always a function of the individual person, correct?
They share the same kitchen. We've gone through this and because they share the same kitchen, they are considered really one business even though there are separate interests. You can get to the other business within the same.
So those configurations from a few years ago still apply? Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions? Any other council discussion? If there's none, I'm going to close the hearing and ask for a motion and a second.
I'll put forward a motion to approve agenda item number ten dash ten ninety-nine.
I'll second it.
A motion by council member Bailey, a second by council member Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. See the applicant here?
I don't know. I've never met the applicant, so I'm not sure.
Okay, all right, just want to wish them well. All right, there's no items on the zoning agenda, unfinished business or new business. So I want to move on to reports. Does the council have any reports?
No, I would just say that we did have a very nice meeting with Representative Tom Price, and I appreciate the city opening to arrange that, inviting us with a little something to eat, but it was always good to see him and get his insight on what's happening in Washington. And I had asked his assistant Kyle to get in touch with you, Chris, because he said Kyle was the one in charge of grants and would know where any grant money might happen to be.
Do you like grants?
And I figured we could always use whatever grants he could find, so I've asked him to try to get in touch with that, with you on that.
Grants aren't lost.
Oh, yes, so Kyle's the one we need to talk to for the grants.
Great, anybody else?
Just a quick comment.
Sure.
I'll just encourage everybody to remember to mark your calendar for this Saturday, the Saturday of this particular week, and that date is the seventeen. Thank you, I'll make sure I state it correctly. It's the Earth Day Festival at Birmingham Park, and that's a compilation of effort obviously between the Milton Groves Green Committee as well as our staff. So please come and enjoy and learn about the environment, learn about, a bit more about your parkland and enjoy that. There'll be some tours being provided by our Parks and Rec Committee members. It's just a great day to celebrate Milton but to focus on how we can be a greener community, and it should be a great opportunity for family and kids, and hopefully the rain will not impact that event on Saturday. And the time is from ten in the morning until three in the afternoon.
All right, I'll turn it over to staff. Dr. Chris?
Couple things tonight, Mayor and members of the council. I wanted to bring your attention to the binder that you have in front of you for this meeting. And although tonight's meeting was relatively seamless and quick, I don't expect any of those items, if they come out of first presentation potentially, or we'll go as quick two weeks from tonight. There's a lot of information in there, and I would just ask that you read it and probably read it sooner rather than later. If you have questions, we're happy to get answers to questions, but because of the magnitude of the information and the amount, quite frankly, if you come up with questions, we're going to need a fairly decent lead time to be able to get them all answered. So I just want to point it out to you that you should have all the stuff, grab a quick look at it sooner rather than later if you have any questions for the meeting of the of the twenty-sixth.
Chris, can I interject here? Is there a reasonable time period that we could expect or kind of have a cutoff time for the questions on this that the staff can answer and legal can answer before the meeting?
With respect to some of the topics, just given the fact that some of the questions may need us to go to outside sources to get answers as well, I would, I would appreciate at least three or four days.
Would be safe to say, you know, by the beginning of next week?
Yeah, beginning to early next week, Monday, Tuesday, you know.
Monday, Tuesday deadline to.
Tuesday, Wednesday, somewhere in there.
Well, maybe Tuesday deadline if it's got to, you know, if it's go through Chris, but then if it used to go to legal and all that.
I'm more worried about the questions that we might need to send to the consultant, Mr. Gilli, as you know. He's just, he's not as easy sometimes. He's easy to get in touch with, but not always as quick as maybe the staff is, so. And you might not have any questions. Hopefully, we've been thorough and complete, but if you do, please get it.
Just out of respect for him, because it is a big, big meeting and a lot of information. And I might just ask Chris if you don't mind maybe sending out an email stating that to, because some of the council members are not here.
Good point. I want to let you know a couple of other just updates. If you've driven up and down Deerfield Parkway, you've seen Morris Road in various stages of being repaved. That is, any good weather which we foresee this week, thankfully, is due to be completed this week. Most of the work is done and we should start to see the finishing touches go on this week. So hopefully by the weekend, we will have a newly paved Morris Road. That's, that's good news. I'll turn it over to Lynn here in just a second to give an update on where we are with respect to the property and crab app, but we'll give you kind of an overview tonight. Part of the reason is because there was some public comment that related to this agenda item tonight routinely because we are, because we know that we are going to take enforcement action very soon. We probably won't go into the nitty gritty details of what that enforcement action would be. It's always great to talk about the enforcement action you're going to take publicly before you actually go do it. So we'll kind of give you a broad level overview and we'll save some of the finer details until after we've taken the action. I do want you to all be aware that one of the things I had wanted to talk about tonight, one of the things I wanted to have tonight was an executive session to discuss a couple of different topics, one being potential litigation, the other being possible land acquisition.
So what was the first item?
Potential litigation.
Thank you.
It's just a consultation with the mayor to have a, a, a weak quorum of the council. Didn't know that that was necessarily the right thing to do since.
Did you say weak?
Weak, being just four.
Look at his muscles. He's not weak.
Just making sure.
Yes.
We can, we can just four, we can numbers.
We had a quad of the council tonight, and I don't know that we necessarily would have been productive in addressing the items that we needed to address, and there was no time sensitivity that forced us to do it tonight. I say that to say we do have some urgency in having it before the end of the month. And what I would like to do since I foresee a long meeting of the meeting on the twenty-sixth, so I'd like to get your consensus to potentially have a special call meeting at five thirty for the purpose of just having an executive session. So we're not tired.
On the twenty-sixth.
On the twenty-sixth, so we're not tired when we go in there, but so that we can still conduct the public's business on time. I'd rather do it ahead of the meeting as opposed to at the end of the meeting. If there's no opposition to that, we will do the appropriate things to get that scheduled.
So it'll be the April, April twenty-sixth at five thirty, correct?
April twenty-sixth at five thirty, yes. One of the items we'll discuss potentially, we'll need a vote in, in the public forum after we discuss it. Therefore, I think it's appropriate to put it on the meeting of the council agenda as opposed to next set, next week's work session, and I also know that we have council members that won't be here next week, so.
And again, I might just ask Chris if you wouldn't mind sending out an email for the council members that are here tonight so they'll know where.
Yep. The third is just to give you an update. This is a pretty packed week. I've got several appointments scheduled this week. Also want, as coming off of the spring break, also want to let you know, and it's certainly not anything that's of any crisis matter, but my wife will be having a minor surgical procedure on Wednesday, and therefore I don't know exactly what I will be taken on the loop of, even if it relates to five-year-old transport on Thursday. Hopefully, she should be back in the game on Friday. I say that just to say if you're looking for me Wednesday or Thursday, you might have to look outside the walls of City Hall. I will stay here around, but that's what's going on. And I think that's the updates that I have for you tonight, any, any updates you might want with questions, but before we do that, if you'll indulge us, we'll give Lynn an opportunity to discuss crab app for real quick.
Regarding the property and the business at eight sixty Mayfield Road, yes, Mr. Bell did contact us, and we have been in touch with the property owner approximately the last week of February and have been working with him all in all for the last several weeks. We have seen a little progress after each visit, unfortunately, not as much as we would like as well. There are issues out there. We have some what we have found to be holes in the ordinance in regards to outdoor display of goods for sale. Those things are not very clearly addressed regarding what is, you know, what can be displayed and perhaps don't really reflect what the public's and the council's desires are for that area. So there are some issues there. We do know that, yes, there are a lot of items being stored there as well, and there are some very clear requirements as far as storage goes and improvements. I would say that this particular property also has some, some requirements that were placed on it as part of a DRB review, a design review board review for a permit that was never actually pulled. And so those requirements aren't at this point, can't be enforced until he pulls that permit for the specific approval that was given. So, but those, those requirements are a reflection of the will of that board and, and the community. And so I think that it's important for us to, you know, try to work with that property owner to get as close to those requirements as we can get. So we are doing that. We are doing that. But I did want to let you know that we are fully aware of the situation. We are working with the property owner as quickly as we can, and we'll be taking the actions that are necessary quickly.
Thank you. Any other prepared for?
Anybody have any questions?
I did have one question. I know we had discussed possibly revising our alcohol beverage license so we did not have the car people that were walkers. Have we decided if we were going to do that? When will that be before us?
It's an item for discussion in next week's work session agenda. There's four items next week, just to give you a preview. That's one of them. Ken's show next week, and Ken's on on a couple of different topics, and Lynn's got one, but that is one for next, next Monday's work session agenda.
And a quick question as a subset to that. Will that also include a discussion as to other possible modifications based on proximity to parkland or proximity to residences and how we might modify that for different areas of Milton?
That's the whole purpose of going into the work session is I thought, I thought I saw what the direction was, and sometimes you do that where you think you know what direction is, the right direction, until you start to think about the unanticipated consequences, which is why we pulled it when we did from the regular agenda and decided to go to work session first. Next Monday will be the format for us to have that discussion and figure out exactly what changes, if any, the council might want. I mean, there, we might have a thorough discussion and decide that the ordinance that we have is purely appropriate, but we might not too, and that's what we need to talk about next week.
And as part of that, just anticipating some of those, you know, intentions, but also some consequences that we might not want to have happen, is it fair to say that between now and then, staff, you know, including our legal counsel, et cetera, might have looked at some alternatives that could achieve some of the things that we've perhaps discussed individually and collectively without necessarily having any negative consequences, but some ways that would allow us to achieve both?
Answer to your question is yes. We'd, we'd done that prior to bringing it forward the first time for the meeting agenda. So really, we're just going to bring forward kind of what we thought we were going to bring forward in the meeting agenda, we're going to bring it forward in work session agenda, so answer to your question, yes, as that work's already done, and we have some language written to get us at a starting point.
Okay, terrific, thank you.
Okay, here we go.
Can I get a copy of any language that we might have since I will not be here next Monday, so I can go and send you my written comments?
Sure, sure, yeah, absolutely. Now, I will send you just everybody. I will. Okay. All right, anything else? That, that concludes this meeting. I just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion by council member Thurman, a second by council member Bailey, that we adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Then we'll move on to public hearings. The city clerk, please sound the next item.
This is for approval of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to I Love New York Pizza and Attila's Grill located at nine eighty Birmingham Road, Suite two hundred, Milton, Georgia, three zero 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 four. The applicant is Anar Gafarzada for consumption on premises, wine and malt beverage. Agenda item number ten, ten ninety-nine presented by Stacy Inglis, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is simply a transfer of ownership. This business has previously held a wine and malt beverage license. The previous owners have sold this business to the new owner, Mr. Gafarzanda, and they have met all the requirements of the city ordinance. Staff recommends approval of the license.
Okay, is there any public comment outside? We're going to open the hearing. There's no public comment. Okay, any questions for the Inglis on this?
I have just one question. I know, thank you, Mayor. I know historically when we had first heard this case, there were two separate businesses, et cetera. Obviously, it's, I believe, ownership's being transferred for both collectively. Can you just speak to whether or not these two businesses are owned singularly by the same person?
They are owned singularly by the same person.
And then similarly, is there ever a need to have two separate licenses based on the two businesses? It's always a function of the individual person, correct?
They share the same kitchen. We've gone through this, and because they share the same kitchen, they are considered really one business even though there are separate interests. You can get to the other business within the same.
So those configurations from a few years ago still apply? Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions? Any other council discussion? If there's none, I'm going to close the hearing and ask for a motion and a second.
I'll put forward a motion to approve agenda item number ten dash ten ninety-nine.
I'll second it.
A motion by council member Bailey, a second by council member Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Then we'll move on to public hearings. The city clerk, please sound the next item.
I'll put forward a motion to approve agenda item number ten dash ten ninety-nine.
I'll second it.
A motion by council member Bailey, a second by council member Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Then we'll move on to public hearings. The city clerk, please sound the next item.
I'll put forward a motion to approve agenda item number ten dash ten ninety-nine.
I'll second it.
A motion by council member Bailey, a second by council member Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Then we'll move on to public hearings. The city clerk, please sound the next item.
I'll put forward a motion to approve agenda item number ten dash ten ninety-nine.
I'll second it.
A motion by council member Bailey, a second by council member Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Then we'll move on to public hearings. The city clerk, please sound the next item.
I'll put forward a motion to approve agenda item number ten dash ten ninety-nine.
I'll second it.
A motion by council member Bailey, a second by council member Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Then we'll move on to public hearings. The city clerk, please sound the next item.
I'll put forward a motion to approve agenda item number ten dash ten ninety-nine.
I'll second it.
A motion by council member Bailey, a second by council member Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Then we'll move on to public hearings. The city clerk, please sound the next item.
I'll put forward a motion to approve agenda item number ten dash ten ninety-nine.
I'll second it.
A motion by council member Bailey, a second by council member Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Then we'll move on to public hearings. The city clerk, please sound the next item.
I'll put forward a motion to approve agenda item number ten dash ten ninety-nine.
I'll second it.
A motion by council member Bailey, a second by council member Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Then we'll move on to public hearings. The city clerk, please sound the next item.
I'll put forward a motion to approve agenda item number ten dash ten ninety-nine.
I'll second it.
A motion by council member Bailey, a second by council member Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Then we'll move on to public hearings. The city clerk, please sound the next item.
I'll put forward a motion to approve agenda item number ten dash ten ninety-nine.
I'll second it.
A motion by council member Bailey, a second by council member Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Then we'll move on to public hearings. The city clerk, please sound the next item.
I'll put forward a motion to approve agenda item number ten dash ten ninety-nine.
I'll second it.